Sing so I can for your joy!
Yeah, for my life!
Somebody feel it! I just wanted to hear me something! I'm ready! I'm ready! Sing so I can for my life!
Yeah, for my life!
Sing so I can for my children!
Yeah, for my children!
Sit walkin', walkin', sit walkin', get walkin' Oh na na! Oh na na! Oh na na! Wait your hand, wait your hand! From a give it to me! Give your best! Ah! Somebody scream for Jesus! Hey! My God is good on!
Yeah! My God is good on!
Hey! My God is good on!
Yeah! My God is good on!
Hey! My God is good on!
Yeah! My God is good on!
Everything is double double!
Everything is double double!
I saw one that got me double eh!
Double double!
I saw this that got me double eh!
Everything is double double!
Eh, double 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 eh!
Everything is double double!
Eh, double 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 eh!
Everything is double double!
Double double double! Double double double!
Double!
Double double double!
Double!
Let's sing double!
Double!
Be is double!
Double!
Joy is double!
Double!
We know, we know, we know!
We know!
I am a winner!
Winner!
You are a winner!
Winner!
You are a winner!
Winner!
You are so blessed! You are so blessed! You are so blessed! You are so blessed! You are is a forever!
Forever!
Mine is a forever! Our is forever!
Forever!
Somebody scream! Lekelekele! 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 Somebody say! Somebody say! Somebody say! Somebody say! Somebody say! Hallelujah! Somebody feel Jesus! You know what I want you to? Want us to lift the fire! And I want us to really lift the fire! And not fire, I want you to give it to the best! Tipu mi ba ita! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Tipu mi shan! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Tipu mi ra dey! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Lucky ri! I want the lucky ri! I'm a rookie! I'm a young girl, I'm a rookie, I'm a girl! I'm a rookie, I'm a girl! I'm a rookie, I'm a girl! Tipu mi rookie! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Tipu mi shan! Fire, fire!
Fire!
All I create program! We check the market, the dollar, the real, the fake! We make the election, the come down! We have the dollar, we make it up the pay! The money discussion, the budget, the money pay! The money challenge, the money, the money! Somebody! Tipu mi shan!
Fire!
Fire, fire!
Fire!
Tipu mi ra dey! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Tipu mi shan! Fire, fire!
Fire!
And tipu mi di mi! Fire, fire!
Fire!
And lucky ri! Eh, lucky ri! Now come here, who can we join eh? Hallelujah! Tipu mi eh ne! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Tipu mi ta! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Tipu mi ja! Fire, fire!
Fire!
Fire, fire!
Fire!
Fire, fire!
Fire!
Osera niya si Kristo! I'm a man of my own soul! My chin de pea! My chin de pea! I want to make a rock a go!
My chin de pea! My chin de pea! I want to make a go!
I'm a man of my own soul! My chin de pea! My chin de pea! I want to make a go! My chin de pea! My chin de pea! I want to make a go! I'm a man of my own soul! My chin de pea! My chin de pea! I'm a man of my own soul!
My chin de pea!
My chin de pea! I'm a man of my own soul!
My chin de pea!
My chin de pea! I'm a man of my own soul!
My chin de pea!
My chin de pea! I'm a man of my own soul!
My chin de pea!
My chin de pea!
I want to make a go!
I'm a man of my own soul!
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 I'm a man of my own soul! I'm a man of my own soul!
I'm a man of my own soul!
I'm a man of my own soul! I'm a man of my own soul!
I'm a man of my own soul!
I'm a man of my own soul! I am so liboso!
Liboso!
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 I'm a little bit! 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 Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Hallelujah!
Hallelujah!
I want you to lie to me!
I'm a little bit!
Who is tired?
I'm a little bit!
Who is tired?
I'm a little bit!
Who is tired?
I'm a little bit!
Like me!
Tell me!
This one don't talk about even bitter!
Who do you worship eh?
Hallelujah! I've got joy! 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 All I've got!
In my life!
What is it?
I've got joy! 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 All I've got! In my life!
Eh eh!
I've got joy! 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 All I've got! In my life! I've got joy! 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 All I've got!
I like what I do, guys, continue to do it!
In my life!
One more time, we go!
I've got joy! 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 All I've got!
Listen!
In my life!
I feel alright! I'll take all my blessing! And I'll run!
Feel alright! I'm a little bit! Blessing them one by one! One, two, three! I feel alright!
Listen!
I'm a little bit! Blessing them one by one! One, two, three! I feel alright! I feel like yeah! One by one! Oh! Joy! All I've got!
Thank you so much! Thank you so much!
In my life!
DJ put it on, okay, okay, wait, wait, wait! Oh, may my! You're always on time! You can't do the wrong! May my! You leave the ninety-nine! Always forty-one! Give us a sense, we don't worry!
You're always on time! You can't do the wrong! Oh, may my! You leave the ninety-nine! Always forty-one! Oh, may my! You're always on time! You can't do the wrong! Oh, may my! You leave the ninety-nine! Always forty-one! Oh, may my! You're always on time! You can't do the wrong! Oh, may my! You leave the ninety-nine! Always forty-one!
Hallelujah! I tell someone! That was part of our intercession! Hallelujah! It was part of our intercession! Hallelujah! I can't go in a kind eh! I love my see a yesu! I'm a boy in your say I'm a killer! Papa eh, I'm a guy! Are you ready? I can feel that for me, right? I just want you to dance, eh man! I can't go in a kind eh! I love my see a yesu! I'm a boy in your say I'm a killer! Papa eh, I'm a guy! Hold me the mic, hold the mic! Let's go together! I can't go in a kind eh! I love my see a yesu! I'm a boy in your say I'm a killer! And Papa eh, I'm a guy! I'm a boy in your say I'm a killer! Papa eh, I'm a guy! I can't go in a kind eh! I love my see a yesu! I'm a boy in your say I'm a killer! And Papa eh, I'm a guy! Give me a seven eh! Let's get seven eh! I'm a boy in your say I'm a killer! Papa eh! Eh, Papa eh! Ay, Papa eh! Eh, Papa eh, I'm a guy! Eh, Papa eh! Eh, Papa eh! Eh, Papa eh! I'm a guy! Eh, Papa eh! Eh, Papa eh! Eh, Papa eh! I'm a guy! I'm a killer! Ah! Ah! The moon! Ah! Can't go! So come on, I can't go by your way! I just want you to feel Jesus! Eh, you can't do the part eh! Care about what I'm showing you, care me eh, be, 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 be eh! Eh man! Just thank you! Do it for us! I just want you to do it for it! I'm a little bit! I'm a little bit! Yeah eh! I'm a little bit! I'm a little bit! I'm a little bit! Yeah eh! I'm a little bit! 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 Yeah eh! I'm a little bit! 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 Somebody feel Jesus! Ah! I'm a little bit! 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 Yeah eh! My yesu eh!
My yesu eh!
My yesu eh!
My yesu eh!
I'm a little bit! 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 Somebody do this, let's go! Hey, hey, hey! We go, we go! Now, this is what you're going to do! You're going to do like four! Cross step forward, are you ready? We go like this! One, two, three, and four, we go! And you go back! You go! One, two, three, four, we go! Are you ready for Jesus? We go! One, two, three, four, we go! I'm a little bit! 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 They are there watching me! Where you are, the most I hope! Hey, we speak good like you! All the other go!
All the other go! They are the ones of me! You are the most I hope!
I just want you to have that connected for God! You can do it! All the other go!
All the other!
You have enough thought of it to say it to God!
They are the ones of me! For you are the most I hope! There is God like you!
All the other go!
All the other go!
You know what?
They are the ones of me! You are the most I hope! There is God like you!
Jehovah!
They are the ones of me!
Jehovah!
They are the most I hope!
Jehovah, Messiah!
They are the ones of me!
Jehovah!
They are the most I hope!
Jehovah! They are the ones of me!
They are the most I hope!
You are good and your mercy is forever! We go! You are good and your mercy is forever eh! Yeah! You are good and your peace is forever! Yeah! You are good and your mercy is forever eh!
Hallelujah!
Jehovah!
They are the ones of me!
Jehovah!
They are the most I hope!
Jehovah!
They are the ones of me!
Jehovah!
They are the ones of me!
Yeah, 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 yeah! Yeah, 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 yeah! Yeah, 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 yeah! Yeah, yeah, yeah! Yeah! Yeah, 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 yeah! On the machine, fast way, fast way, fast way, fast way! Are you there? I just want you to do this! Are you ready? Everybody, the corner you! Hey! Hey! Yeah, yeah, yeah! Are you ready for the night? Please go to me!
Yeah!
Hey! You need to pour that!
Yeah, 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 yeah!
Let's go! Hey, hey, yeah! Hey, yeah, yeah! Do it, let's go!
Yeah, 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 yeah!
Watch him, I give you energy!
Yeah!
Ah!
Yeah!
Hey! Thank you!
Yeah, 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 yeah!
Yeah, welcome my humanity!
Yeah! Yeah! Yeah!
Yes, wonderful! And the better part! Yes, my tonight!
Yeah!
Please go to tell! Please go to know! Every time is good!
Yeah, 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 yeah!
I'm a little bit! Yeah!
Yeah! Yeah!
Yes, my tonight!
Yeah!
I love my guy eh!
Yeah!
Yes, soon after you so! Hey, yeah, yeah! Ah! Hallelujah! Are you loving Jesus? That's what I want you to do! I know there's this life, you want your praises! And they do something, come on by your side! I just want you to enjoy, come! Hallelujah! Hallelujah! There's this peace that we find in God when we are praising God! God seems to come down! Again to us! And he begin to speak to us! Hallelujah!
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 Annoeza! Buena wama buena! Thank you!
Annoeza! Buena wama buena! Annoeza!
Okay, fast way, fast way! I just want you to pray! Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Annoeza!
I don't like that, then I'll check out!
Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
You know, say it's fine! One more time! Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Annoeza!
Thank you! Everybody!
Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Yesi robo! Bimbo miro bimbo!
Yesi robo! Yesi robo!
Shall we? Let's go!
Yesi robo!
Go! Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Yesi robo! Robi rotoj barade!
Yesi robo! Yesi robo! Bimbo miro bimbo! Yesi robo!
Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Annoeza! Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Yesi robo! Yesu matola no!
Yesi robo! Yesi robo! Bimbo miro bimbo! Yesi robo!
Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Annoeza! Annoeza! Buena wama buena!
Hallelujah! I want you feel that is worthy! It's God is worthy! Hallelujah!
Hallelujah!
Here I am under the rock! The rock is soft for me eh! My Jesus, amen! And I am under the rock! You hear me now, listen! God tell my to be! I am under the rock! Because my Jesus, amen! I am under! I am under!
I am under the rock!
Look at Jesus!
The rock is soft!
Somebody do the record for Jesus! How you say?
I am under the rock! God tell my everything! I am under the rock! See, I'm high! I am under the rock!
Anapondo the chana! Eh, chana niwe! Yoba kana! Anapondo the chana! Shiri wey to be there! Anapondo the shana! Eh, yesu! Yesu kana!
Anapondo!
Eh, anapondo!
Anapondo the shana!
Ah!
Shana niwe! Yesu kana! Anapondo the shana! See, the world is taking over! Anapondo the shana!
Thank you so much, thank you, Jesus!
Yesu kana! Anapondo the shana!
Hear me rock, me rock my friend, Jesus! Jesus, eh! So sweet!
I'm a little bit! I'm a little bit! Jesus, eh!
Can't do better than me rock, me rock my friend, Jesus! Jesus, eh! So sweet!
I'm a little bit! I'm a little bit! Jesus, eh! So sweet!
I've got my mind, man! In the hood, I'm a bad! But someone to see my Jesus! Something! I've got my mind, man!
And I want!
What is the reason?
What I want! To see my Jesus! Something!
One more time, I've got! I've got my mind, man! And!
I want!
What is the reason?
What I want! To see my Jesus! Something! I've got my mind, man! And I want! What I want! To see my Jesus! Something!
One, 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 again! One, 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 again! Somebody feel Jesus!
One, 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 again! I'm gonna, one, again!
Say it one more time!
One, 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 again! I'm gonna, one, again!
We go! I am gonna, I'm gonna, one, go!
I'm gonna, one, again!
Thank you so much! I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one, go! I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one, go! I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one, go! I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one, go!
I'm gonna, one, again!
One more time!
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, one, go! I'm gonna, one, again!
I'm gonna, one, too! I'm gonna, one, too! I'm gonna, one, too! See, I'm a man! I'm gonna, one, too!
I'm gonna, one, too! Oh! I'm gonna, one, too! Oh! I'm gonna, one, too! See, I'm a man!
Listen! I'm for you, yesu! Eh, I'm for you, yesu, pa! I'm for you, yesu! I'm for you!
I'm for you, yesu! Eh, I'm for you! I'm a little bit! I'm for you, yesu! I'm for you!
Listen! I'm for you, yesu! I'm for you, buh me! I'm for you, but me, you know. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you. Do me. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you. God tell. I'm for you, Yesu. And I'm for you. I want us to enjoy. You know what you're going to do? I want us to sing the glory in Luganda. One of my praises, I wanted to do that in Luganda. Anybody ready? God bless you, my sister. Wherever they, you love my, are you there? Wherever they, Yesu. Wherever they. One more time, wherever they. Wherever they, Yesu. Where you mean, come on. God, I see. Give my sister time. Give my sister time, give my sister. To remind it, my sister, we go. Wherever they, Yesu. Wherever they, you love my, are you there? Wherever they, Yesu. Wherever they. One more time, just for your love. Wherever they, Yesu. Ah. It's a long goal. Wherever they, Yesu. Wherever they. I want someone to do it in Swahili. Anybody? Okay, nah, see here. See here, God. Can you do that? Okay, let me see. Let me see. Ashante Yesu. Ashante sibawa ina. Ashante Yesu. Ashante me. Eh, go. Ashante Yesu. Ashante sibawa ina. Ashante Yesu. Ashante. Let's try Luganda, be a little bit. When somebody I'm called, you can feel God. And you can just enjoy God. Are you ready for Jesus? Ah. I want to for Yesu. I want to for Yesu. I want to for Yesu. I want to for. We go. I want to for Yesu. I want to for Yesu. Hallelujah. I want to for Yesu. I want to for. Yalama, Yesu. Yalama, Yesu. Yalama, Yesu. Yalama. Oh, my God. Yalama, Yesu. Yalama, Yesu. This is where you're quite terrible. Yalama, Yesu. Yeah. Yalama. Are you ready for all this, we go? One, two, three, we go. Somebody enjoy God, are you ready? Are you ready? We go. Ah, 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 ah. One, two, three, we go. Ah, somebody feel Jesus. One more time. One, two, three, we go. Wherever they, Yesu. Wherever they, you love my, are you there? Wherever they, Yesu. Uh. Wherever they. We go. Wherever they, Yesu. Wherever they, you love my, are you there? Wherever they, Yesu. Wherever they. I want to sing a song in Luganda. I say, awania. Awania, yes, man. Are you sure, are you really ready for this? Are you sure? Awania. Awania, Yesu. Awania, Yesu. Somebody sing to God. Awania. Thank you. Awania, Yesu. Awania, Yesu. Somebody give for Jesus. Awania. Hallelujah. God tell you, yesu. Awania, Yesu. Hallelujah. Awania. Awania, Yesu. Awania, Yesu. Awania. Awania. Awania, Yesu. Awania, Yesu. Thank you, Jesus. Awania. Until you call. Yes, I love you, Father. Awania, Yesu. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you, Yesu. We are for. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you. I'm for you, Yesu. I'm for you, Yesu. We give you all the glory. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy to be praised. We give you all our glory. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy to be praised. We give you all our glory. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy to be praised. Somebody lift up your hands and sing your song with us together as we worship God. You are the Alpha and Omega. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy to be praised. You are the Alpha and Omega. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy to be praised. You are the Alpha. You are the Alpha. Thank you, Jesus. I love you. We bless you, Lord. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy. Oh, we give you glory. We give you our glory. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy to be. Oh, we give you glory. Oh, our glory. We worship you, Lord. You are worthy to be praised. You know, the Bible says, our God is called the everlasting Father. And this is a God without the beginning, without the end. And this God is a God who loves you with love that has no boundary. The unconditional love. He said, "Come unto me, and I will give you rest." He's the one who says, "I am your Father, and if you call on me, and I will answer." And that's why we say we give you all the glory. Not because you deserve this worship. You deserve the glory. And the honor. Lord, we lift our hands to worship. As we bless your holy day. You deserve the glory. And the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship. As we praise your holy day. For you are great. You do miracles. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. For you are great. Hallelujah. You do miracles. That's not Jesus. There is no one else like you. Oh, Jesus. There is.